Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start our Q and A session. I think we're going to mix language like Chin, Mizzou, Burmese and English, so that we can all understand. Some of—most of the questions are in Chin, but I'll try to translate it in English. And the CM, if you would prefer to respond in English, that would be appreciated because some people really don't understand Mizzou, but it's up to you. Le, zang fana ten question pokha. Genoru filter luthe hashide. Genoru B D P gane, genoru jute chong chadalu. Question kata amyani, no? Genoru eda filter luthe halero shide. Eda nali pe java, no? Genoru very limited time shiduna. Eda chong genoru ten nezo, bama lupi phe, eni lupi phe. Salibido luto ame, lohobi. Chubai lepu, nile, intan may donia. Apakatna, tsuan. I'm going to translate it in English. If people who came from Burma—I mean refugees—if they want to be officially staying there as migrant, what steps should they take? And the second question is, in order to have big account in Mizzorum, what should we do?
It's a good question. India is not a signatory to the refugee protocol. And officially, there cannot be a refugee in India. So we call them displaced people. That's why we cannot give the status as well as the advantages of being a refugee. But at the same time, we are—we—they are being given the same status, the same treatment, in kind and in class. Everything is given to them. The only thing is that we can't trump them as refugees. And number two is... Well, I'm not well conversant about the financial matters and banking and all this. I think many people from—coming from the Chin Hills, they are having bank accounts, if I'm not mistaken. So you can ask those people in Mizzorum how to get it, you know? How to get this bank account opened? And many people will be able to help you.
Lome, thank you. Okay, the second question. There are many medical doctors among the refugees. So in order for them to practice their field legally in Mizzorum, is there any way you can help medical doctors among refugees? Can they practice legally in Mizzorum? Or can you help them practice their medical field?
Well... Even the children are going to the schools and the colleges, and there is no differentiation in between. And I think that should apply to the doctors also. There is no harm in giving them practice in the—even—I think that some of our organizations here, they are in, you know, coordination with the Victoria Camp, opening and running clinics in Isol itself, rendering medical helps and assistances. So if they have a qualified, I mean, prescribed qualification, I don't think there is—there is no harm. But... That has to be studied and examined further because I may be mistaken. I'm not very sure about it.
Good, Lome, thank you. And the third question is here. His Excellency, Pulal Duuma, the Honorable Chief Minister of Mizzorum. Thank you very much for helping bomb refugees from Bangladesh. Do you have—or does your government have any plans to initiate communication with the concerned authority of Bangladesh government to address the ongoing unrest situation in Bandar Bar to stop all violence, ethnic religious cleansing activities towards bomb community in Bangladesh?
When East Pakistan became Bangladesh under the leadership of Sheikh Majibu Rahman, some kind of political unrest had taken place in Bangladesh, which led to the assassination of Majibu Rahman. And the president—is no longer president—that—the ousted prime minister had fled to Delhi seeking for asylum. And she was given political asylum. By that time, I happened to be the deputy commissioner of police in charge of security in Delhi police. We look after Dalai Lama, we look after her, we look after... So many, you know, like the Queen of Bhutan and all that. So that time, they have small children and they want to go to London for the study of their children. And personally, I helped her in getting accommodation, getting—providing security and ensuring their safe journey to London and all. Now she has been ousted. Personally, I feel very sad about it. At the same time, these bomb people are brothers and sisters. They are being treated very badly. And they keep on coming to India seeking shelter. And the BASF people who are on duty in the border area, they push them back. Last time when I met the prime minister and the home minister, I tell them that I cannot push them back just to die in the forest with the leeches and mosquitoes around. The prime minister insisted that I should push them back. I said, "Sir, from the bottom of my heart, there is one thing I cannot do. Please don't pressurize me." Then he asked me to be the home minister. I met the home minister, and he had agreed that once they reach the soil of our country, they should not be pushed back. That arrangement has been made, and the refugees coming from Bangladesh, particularly this bomb community, they don't face any longer problem at all. But after this instability that is being happened in Bangladesh, India anticipated that a number of—a large number of Hindus who are being persecuted there may try to enter inside the territory of India along with the minorities. So... A red alert was announced in the border areas. All the border areas adjacent to Bangladesh has been closed. And in some areas, curfews were announced, gates were closed. Since then, we do not afford to entertain any refugees from Bangladesh. I'm sorry to say, whether they happen to be a Bangladesh, a Bengali, or a Chakma, or a bomb, or whatever, India is strictly protecting its soil from these people crossing the border. So... Right now, fortunately, we don't have any refugees coming from Bangladesh among this bomb community. Things were different now. And it all depends on how the new government of Bangladesh will be taking actions against them or will be trying to find a solution of the turmoil. And Bangladesh cannot be kept burning all the time. So some sort of solution has to be there. Under the present circumstances, I think these bomb people are safe rather than before.
Thank you. Another question is, do you have a lot of pressure from central government about Chin refugees in Burma? And number two question is, how is Kaladan project at this point after military Minoli took over power? Kaladan project and the pressure from central government? It is in lai, hakachin.
I'm sorry to say that this Kaladan project has been abandoned because some portion of Myanmar is going to be submersed. It's an international issue because this Kaladan river is sandwiched by India and Burma. So once a dam is constructed, the border areas have to be submerged. For that matter, we have to take permission from the government of Myanmar. And right now, it's not possible to talk to any one of them for this kind of, you know, business. So at present, unless and until we get some sort of agreement, memorandum of understanding is signed between India and Myanmar, there's no question of—no longer question of having this Kaladan project at this stage.
All right. The next question is—it is in Mizzou, so I'm going to read it in Mizzou. Pu Chief Minister, Kaladan project, Jung Tsang, Arakan Army nen, Mizzorum tunek duten nen, an in biati te kahkan tria ah. Kaladan project hi, Belawa Township crossing Siemani wangin, du na Chin—hey, Chin Council nen, the Chin Revolution Army dang tenen in biatu tesor kalamin, ngai tuana in nen.
Oh, az ona ang zel hien, kan sang meh nga. Kaladan project inti hianin, hayal project inti nangeni, sami kong puhi sohina soh. Eh, all right, all right. Sitwa thenga kong puhi ti soh. So-so, Arakan Army te tsuan, atlank tui tui an du tu min fila. An ma ni ngai min filani. Kan lou tria da nin, kontraktor nen, trangin puhi sa te in laa ah, siya te in khona. Kong puhi siam hi, in—low ti Muang Tsang ah, harsa na in low siam. Ti hi karriya da nen ya adikem ti kazo ta. An ho tu pa tsuan adiklu, he kong puhi tlank tui tui se kan du zo kani. Kontraktor haupo, athe yang anin tran puhi nakan pe zo kani, antie ve tlad meh ah. Tsu tsu amhuna te adik zo kaka relova. Te tsuan, India sorkar po hi antie tlank tui tui adu ah. Tsumiya tsuan, hey, tu na Chin Hills area, antie mai ba ka hian, Arakan Army te theng po hian, ngani. In biak nen ai puhi, kadu ni, kei mah hian. An san tsu, Arakan Army te nenakani bu ti amlo tsuan, kei ni ay nan tsak zo. Myanmar buai na hi, Mizzorum akan nu glu do nen. Kan ngam tak tak doan tsuan lo, an tsak lutuk, sipai ngan lutuk. Tsu bangtsuan, in—indau nilavin, kanin chen haso tu rania. Tsu bangtsuan, he ta CNA an nen mo, Chin Brotherhood an nen mo, Chinland Council an nen mo, ZAR West Trancomani, Trancomani an nen mo, AA an nen mo, DAIPDF an nen mo. Ay ngapokha, i, kan do u ay nan ngani. Tsu bangtsuanin, kei mani le, kei mani inti zo ngakan kaltsuan. Kahkatzu Myanmar Military Junta loom zo, takani doana. Hei kan ti lo, ngaya, Arakan Army te po tria na kan siam adikang. Tsu thiani lo tsuan, longtlae thengin minon ti buaiyang. Katian ka kantana poi le tu rani. Thil re rang hi, extreme tangai tuatun lo. Mizzorumin kum somni independent kan suala. Kan tuar ringot meh ni. Tsu, thil ti thay lo tu rsi. Politician ten min kai kui daan adik lo tsuan kum somni kan tuar rani. Apoi lutuk kani. Tsu bang kilai area ki, Chin Phil kan du ah. Tsu ta tsuan, moh puna tui takka kova hian nen, ma teni. Kan mia nen bang khan, Mizzom songa ti loom thay lo. Du na unity kan nen na tu len, bum kha na tu ra, mission ka thona hian. Kan hun na poi na tuar thay ni ti karriya nen. Ma se kan nam kal zel tu ri, kanin chen tu ren lo, kanin bum kha tu rani. Tsu ah tsuan katian eh ma wangin, hang thil hi, kan ti mek kan di ah. Tsu wangin helai akalanan project hi tsu. Du na hian, luk—luk east, ti trin ka at east tiya tlak an ni doa. Kei po ka hansin doa, India sorkar tirin, MLP, ngaparukvel ruaiin, PAC chairman kan ilaiin, he ta Bengkok thengin, kanhan kalah. He ta longtlae namhun tuur te, kanron ena, at Mizzorum kan lohon len, du apokan kal le ah, solaya. Tian khanin, kan ti amaro tsu, komponsele eng mah vela, aboa, abo e wangin duangin kalsak thay lova. Ma se ngin nakum ma te tsuanin, an zo ta mai kan be siya. Katian i katuan, socio-economic impact lian takka om doana. Hemya ta nen kan lo in bua sa lo po tu leni.
Ole, Lome. Adang pakalit tsu, lai do genia. Chinland Council, Chin Brotherhood te hun keta, an um tena tu rin, plan te in nen, kan kate hianin.
Ah, kakatu, nitzi na kahan kan soi vekto ah. Ne, an buai tlang ya tsu, mara. Kan mara u na ote po, a trangin Chin Brotherhood an sapota. A trangin CNA an sapota. Mo, nam khat po, khan kan omani. Soi trupo ngai lo. Tsu bangtsuanin, du na hian, apoi mo tsu, Chin National Army le, Chin Brotherhood le, kan ZAR te, le mah loam lian deuk te. Aisola te po in biak na te, ma ni lo khan, niyani ah, zoro ka ruaiin. Tui tak an theng ri lova. Ma se tu na tsuan, in re ma tu leni ti hi, kan pom vektoni. An ni poi nan pom vektoni. Tsumiya ta tsuan, nam ni helai om te, in poi mo eh meh 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 ni. Helai ko kran te, helai NGO te, anin nga na innia. Eh, an ni ho ka? An gap ship roh in ti tsuan, an gap ship meh. In poi mo eh meh 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 ni, mo. Tsu bangtsuan, helai trang hian rem na kan siam ang tsu. Kan ko kran te poi, hei man la doana loom.
Ole, loom, Lome. Jem zigte ama, yang lau ni, CM ni ka chaan kani ka utruanga, adang am filter bibitu ta nga kan red. Okay, tsu tinit tsuan, dang pakalit tsu. Mizzou dong ni, ral tlan, abikin Burma dang arun tlan, linn hau te. Okay, yang lau ni, i ken ping lai kan hei, ID te, ti tsuan lan tu rka siamangitie katian te ka, iti lo klingen, iti bui klingen, ti na ni tsu, ral tlan hau tan, ID, oh.
Sorkar masakha nin, bi metric identification ka, ti tu rin ma alou laa. Te tsuan, a line of—angeni, another officer tu te po, an lo thang veka training te an lo pe vektoni. Tian tsuan, sorkar masakha ma alou laa. Ma se in han alou na itakakhaan, politically, nan chep uhi lao wangin, an lo ti toblai lo kani, ti toptak tak lovin. Tsu bang kei ni kanhan sorkar ta ah. Prime Minister te, Home Minister ten, bi metric identification ti tu rin, min ti nen. Maro tsu, kalaya an portal man ka, pakatsu criminal tan ania. Pakale tsu, illegal migrant to be deported tan anitani. Kaminoi akhaan kan ral tlan te kan displaced people te kan register ngat tsuan, deportu rani, criminal angani. Tsu bangtsuan, Prime Minister nen akhaan, he portal hi kan mang thay lo. Home Ministry and Portal fran min perose. They are neither criminals nor illegal migrants. Tsu wangin, portal fran, min siam sakula. Tsu ta tsuan, chinchea tsu kan chincheang, bi metric po kan ti ve thavang, rekot kan nen ngai loom kan tiya. Tsu bang du na hian, Home Ministry and Portal fran min peto ah. Tsu minhua ya tsuanin, na hi kan tran mek kani. Kahkatzu kan ti low thay lo, kan chinchea low thay lova. Ah, han pa ID in pek, aob ka re lova. Ten le khaan ji tsuan, certificate ta, Myanmar miyan ni ti, an certificate ta in low tsuan ti tu rani min ti boka. Tsu po tsu kan ti thay lova. UCC in ti ro, min ti nen low tsuan, Tesor Karin, tsu thiang mi certificate ti dang lamna, tunen na kan nen lo. Certificate ta reeng reeng nationality le katian ngo ngai lo India ramah. Hei tsu, ti rem lo kan tiya. Ango ita, eng ma min ti sui to lo du na hianin. Tsu tsu, kan din mun tsu, ni maya maro tsu, kamhi, in register, kar ero tsu, an ngai veni. Kanin register ah, ti tsuan, tsangin an puna, tsangin an trang le, te khan, adik takaa, na i kasu aharvia va. Tsangin pasalan low ne, nu puhi tan low ne, te khani. Kan maqpa te low ne, kan mou nu te low ni zela. Ko kran ah te, weh meh ah te, amemba trang kai te non ni soh zela. Hei du na ya MCS exama te po, anon ti trai meh meh lo mani. Tian tsu ania, tsu bangtsuan, in kia tak tak hi tsu, athe ivek loa, athe chinchi ne ro tsuan, India sorkar du da, nan hi kan zo mbe zela ni.
Ah, loom, Lome, hei, bani te, ta nga kanhan zo lo loang e. Kutsiak, eng lau kop meh? Okay, you have mentioned, we, the Chin Zou, Koki, Mizzou, can come together under India. How you can bring peace among—hisu in county Chinland Council and Chin Brotherhood in Manipur? We know that Bangladesh political changed lately. How we form a united Chinland Zauram after we've been through all these years under three countries?
It's just like a two-way traffic. As far as we are concerned, we so never ever accept the division of our people into three countries. This will never be acceptable. And the boundaries are imposed boundaries by the British government. In that committee, we are never represented. We are never consulted. Therefore, it is an imposed boundary, we'll never accept it. We'll never accept construction of boundary fencing in between us. It all depends whether we are prepared, whether we are willing to be under a single administrative unit within India. That will be decided by you. This is one part. So far as Zoro was concerned, the main policy of Zoro was to have reunification within India. We cannot fight Myanmar, we cannot fight India, we cannot fight Bangladesh simultaneously at the same time. We cannot three—we—we do not afford to have three enemies which are bigger than us. So that is one thing we have to do on our part. The second thing is, what is the opinion of India? For that, I'm nobody to, you know, to say—to have—to make any statement on behalf of government of India. But there is—there are things, you know. If I—if you accept me, I accept you. If you don't accept me, I don't accept you. That is diploma, diplomacy. So it all depends on us. The reason why I have come here, to talk about unity within India, means something. I won't talk much beyond that. So keep guessing. Keep guessing what the next is.
Thank you very much. This will be our last question. Due to limited time we have, we apologize. If we don't read out your question, thank you for your patience and thank you for your understanding. So the last question would be, according to the Chin Voice, from January to June this year, within six months, Mizzorum government arrested a drug worth of 67 billions India money. That drug were brought by AA. What was said by some insiders—this was said by some insider—that is very reasonable. Do you think that is because of AA?
I talked about this issue with the AA leaders at my own residence. They strongly denied about having any connection with this drug trafficking. And they promised to help in carbon and protecting and, you know, reducing the supply. So that is—so far, that is what I can say about the AA. But it is well known, it is a fact. that drug is coming from the other side of the boundary. And this new government, we have intensified our actions against this drug trafficking. And we, the seizure also has become much more. That is why, because we are proactive now. And we'll continue to be very, very proactive in this regard. And we are going to amend some of our laws also, so that, you know, some volunteers, the NGOs are also given some authority, some protection, some legal protection. Otherwise, it is difficult for them. When God decides something about them, they themselves, who are good citizens, who are the prominent citizens, has to go to the jail. That is how bad is our present law is. Therefore, we are trying to amend some of the provisions of the existing action laws, thereby enhancing the power of the NGOs, who are our main organ in combating this manage.
Thank you very much. We're not quite done yet. Please still be seated. Let us give our chief guest another round of applause for this.
Thank you everyone for staying until this program.